...of 839 North 10th Street concerning code violations operating a business in residential zoning without appropriate documentation. Variances are special exceptions. We're going to talk about it more in the BZA meeting about what the options are, and some of those options will be directly affected by the changes that are being adopted in the land use ordinance, correct? In Plan Commission.
Yeah, we're talking about it in Plan Commission. I don't know if it's going to affect this one or not. Yeah. And I don't know what Nate's presentation is on, other than an explanation of changes that were made in the land use ordinance already.
Correct.
Okay. These aren't proposed changes.
It doesn't have anything to do with this particular one.
But the unique circumstances that we're going to be talking about could cause us to ask for some changes.
Right.
Or amendments to what we've just adopted or considering adopting.
Right.
So that will be discussed in more detail on that 10th Street property. Thank you, Steve. Anything else from members of BZA? From the City Attorney? Building Department?
We will be having another meeting in the next, probably, four weeks. Pursuing for the first Tuesday in October.
All right, anything else? If not, do I hear a motion to adjourn BZA so Plan Commission can convene?
Aye, so move.
Second.
Call isn't fair?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen. Time to play musical chairs.
Okay, I called order the Plan Commission meeting, and first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting that were mailed to you. Are there any additions or corrections? Do I hear a motion that we accept it as email?
So move.
Is there a second? Motion been made in second to accept the minutes as email, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay, we've passed around, I think everyone's seen the proof of publication ad. Do I have a motion to make that a matter of record?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made in second to make the proof of publication a matter of record, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Okay, petitions before us this evening, number one, Gilpin Iron Rooks requesting Plan Review for an 80 by 125 warehouse at 1819 Patterson Indicated. Refer to City Code Section 150.330B.
From Miller and Levin, representing the owner and the builder on this project. So basically, Gilpins is, like we mentioned, 80 by 125, whole horn type structure, metal siding, metal roof, directly south of the facility. Basically, cold storage, warehouse facility, storing steel items, so nothing flammable type items like that. Had a very productive meeting with Nate and Roger about three weeks ago prior to starting this meeting. Went over the project based on the size of the project, no storm drainage detention required. Also, Fire Chief happened to stop in while we were meeting, and based on his comments, we are proposing an extension of their gravel park lot in southwest corner to help a firetruck based on mobility in case of a fire type thing. So we did add that based on his comments and concerns. Pretty straightforward, basically, just rectangle building they're doing, overhead door on this facility that can match up to their existing building, that they can just cart things between the two buildings. Pretty straightforward, I can answer any questions you may have.
Members, any questions? I'm not commissioning.
What's the height of that build, this new building? Um, I don't have an exact answer for that. Approximately probably 12-foot walls. Okay. It's pure, yeah, not many. That's good for us, but.
Any other questions?
So this is just an accessory structure for them, they're independent, so it doesn't modify their existing facility. Do we receive architectural plans for that?
I think I... Do you have a copy in your file of the plans, architectural?
Not the, not the structure, no.
Okay. I was thinking I had to elaborate ones, maybe that would be like...
I think that's a little...
Actually, I do have some that I can pass around.
Let's do that.
I forgot I had these.
Even if we can just make those a matter of record.
Not a good game, but, um...
Let's do that. Even if we have to get those back to you.
So there's lighting in the building and no insulation?
Correct.
Any other questions? Any other questions from commission members?
Just a clarification, since this is an accessory building to a facility that's already in operation, do we still need the landscape plan and the other items that normally would go along with a site plan review?
As an industrial zone, we've got flexibility in that landscaping is essentially tied to, your screening and buffering is towards residential structures, not other industrials. So, um, since there's no additional parking, there's no shade requirements, we can look at like a lighting plan, but really, there's not, their existing facility is lit, so essentially it's a minor modification to their facility is how Roger and I, we're looking at this.
Yeah, I'm going to require light backup, exterior mandors and things like that.
No, just be part of their regress.
They're doing minimal electrical per code.
Yeah.
Right, but again, that's required by state.
Right.
For the industrial facility. What I'm asking about would be the light pollution for adjoining properties, and as Nate said, if it's not residential, if it's industrial, we don't, in my opinion, need any of that.
No. So, I think we're in a position where we can waive a number of those requirements.
I had no additional questions beyond what has been presented here and was discussed in the previous meeting.
Anyone else? Is there anyone in opposition who wishes to speak? Seeing none. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor? Seeing none. We transfer the board, final question, comment, to the applicant. Do I hear a motion, should have passed up here, do I hear a motion to approve the plan?
Aye, so move.
Is there a second? Motion been made in second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. I should ask any questions?
Yeah, one question would be if it's final site plan approval. I would think it would be.
Yes, this is essentially a, we'll go through these in a little bit, but this wouldn't be a primary and secondary approval. Essentially, it's an ILP improvement location permit.
An ILP?
Yes. So we'll talk about that here in a little bit. So you're just, it's no different than you're just doing a modification of the facility, so.
Okay, that's my only question.
Okay, so, motion's been made, can we make it that it will be that it's a final site plan? Okay, approval from that. Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is the Plan Commission Review, 2015 Land Use Ordinance Subdivision Control and Improvement Location Permit. And while he's doing that, I'm sorry, I didn't pass around the affidavit of notice of public hearing, and I need to make that a matter of record to the applicant. I didn't realize it was that. Before Nate begins, can I have a motion to accept or to make the affidavit a matter of record?
So move.
Okay, motion been made in second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you. Sorry, I didn't see it under here.
Well, as you're all aware, we have new code ordinances as opposed to our last plan ordinance. With the modifications that we passed to Sue, Craig Gibson, myself, Roger, and a number of the department heads had a number of meetings as far as how best to approach the changes, and the determination was essentially make the modifications within the existing ordinance and try to streamline the process as best we could. So what I have here is essentially my notes of not so much, here's how we used to do it, here's how we do it now. Essentially, what I do is I just go through the land development process. What you should see is Plan Commission members, the process, so you're kind of familiar with what, what, how often we're going to meet. Hopefully, the process, we're going to reduce the number of meetings that Plan Commission needs to have because there's a cost to the city as far as having them, the vertical view as far as coming. So let me go through this, make sure this all makes sense. Subdivision control is about in the four distinct stages. We, and this is for subdivisions, not so much what you saw today with Gilpin, but Bell Farm Six. Projects like that, well, we have numerous meetings, but now you're going to see four stages. Sketch Plan, which is Chapter 154.016, and that's the new numbering system. Primary Plan, Secondary Plan, and Final Plan. So those are different chapters and sections that follow that. The sketch plan is an administrative stage, so that would not be Plan Commission actually even used. The parties involved have a few, the City Building Inspector, City Engineer himself, the applicant, and the zoning administrator. Now, that's a distinction as far as the language in the ordinance. Roger's also the zoning administrator. He fills both shoes as far as the code is concerned, but it's two distinct, essentially, offices that he holds. So, those are groups that would meet. The outcome of the meeting is essentially to lay out the plan. We make some suggestions as far as their process and what they're hoping to do. At that point, they've spent very little money as far as engineering. They're not finished plans at that point, at least that's the hope. We can't stop them from doing that, but it's to try to give, steer them in the process of what they need to do so that they don't come in and leave frustrated by submitting a Plan Commission in a public hearing. We make some recommendations, and then we draft a schedule for them as far as when the meeting dates would be, when they have to have their semils in by to make certain meeting dates, so that they can schedule their financing and construction. The duration of the sketch plan process is up to them. We don't stick the timetable, it's essentially a courtesy, there's no charge for that. So if they want to meet, make modifications, and then have a second sketch plan meeting, that's present. So at that point, either the Plan Commission hasn't been promised with the process at that point. Sketch Plan Requirements, and this is included in the ordinance, every sketch plan will be allegedly drawn and show the following items. This is fairly limited. Adequate information represents the subdivision, we're looking for something between 50 and 1-inch equal 50 and 1-inch equal 200. No features, the lot layout number block, and the acreage of the proposed subdivision. This would be overall, in fact, so this would be everything from phase one to phase 20, let's say. The building, the property, proposed to use, whether it's residential, commercial, or industrial. Name and address and phone number of the developer, so we have some contact information to work from. Information the applicant feels important. Site characteristics, so that we can make some engineering decisions based on recommendations toward them as far as soil conditions, wetlands or wooded area. Reports concerning streams, lakes, topography, and vegetation that kind of covers the same area, other ge- geological characteristics, but it's maybe fairly limited. Maps and tables concerning general information on the site. So it's very minimal information, essentially, it's a layout of the subdivision that's proposed. The next step is the primary plan. That set includes, as far as Plan Commission review of the project, the City Building Inspector, Plan Commission, applicant or subdivider, and the public utilities. So that was when we start notifying the other department heads from water, wastewater, sewer, stormwater, because I'm also a stormwater department head, I'm already been involved in the projects, and if that were ever to be split, they would be involved. Also, other public utilities can be notified. Outcome of the meeting would be an approval or conditional approval of their project. Essentially, just move their primary plan approval forward. We've had so many, some projects where they walk away with primary plot approval, and they hold on to that for a period of time. We could also deny primary plot approval at that point, and that recommendation would then go on to the Board of Works, notifying them in writing with a reason and justification why you rejected the project. The duration of the primary plot approval, or no, duration of that stage is maximum 90 days from application. The reason I put that in is because it shows kind of the timeframe of when we would get notifications, how long it takes for us to approve the novel. So from the time of the application, we have 90 days to either reject or approve their primary plan. Plan is reviewed by utilities, we're looking at 10 days from Semil, so the department heads, utilities, 10 days, by the ordinance, review the project and get comments back, and when you've got their responses prior to making a decision, that way you're not coming in out of this board. Primary plan previously was called the preliminary plan. This is kind of just a flow chart of it, first step for the Plan Commission. The applicant submitted to the Building Inspector, so Roger is really the point of contact for all these developers as he's open thin. At that point, the project is then routed to the different department heads and also to the Plan Commission, so he sends everything out, Sharon as well. It goes to the agencies for reviews, the department heads review the plan, comments are returned to Roger and Sharon, they compile those. Comments of them, Roger and Sharon also are entitled to make comments on the, on the plan, and so they compile that, submit those to the Plan Commission in addition to the original Semil, and then the Plan Commission has the 90 days to either approve it on either project. Primary, primary plan requirements, you can see them listed here, very similar to sketch plan. They do include a number of specifics as far as acreage and additions, so you'll see in here, and Wignick printout, I don't have a copy, they're kind of just a cheat sheet for you to use when you're doing the primary plan review. I don't want to waste a lot of time reading through these, it's still fairly limited. Again, this is primary plan, so really, all you're approving are the number of lots, the size of lots, and the type of use. That's really all this primary plan is, it's the next step has sketch plan. So at that point, you're saying, yes, we're in general agreement that a residential subdivision here makes sense, the number of lots, the lot density separation makes sense, your green space to developed area, Plan Control must be our work. That's really all you're looking at that point. Probably in the engineering and deep, although there is in the background at that point, you're not approving that as even the department head's.
But you've seen in the past, some of you's been on the board a while, that a lot of them come in and they want to combine that sketch plan and the primary plan together in one, at this one meeting. And we're trying to separate it, you know, it's, basically, if it's a smaller three or four lot subdivision, you know, they want to combine it to speed the process up.
At this point, it wouldn't, we, we could potentially do that. Essentially, we would have to do a primary plan approval, and then follow it with secondary plan approval, or either the whole subdivision or a section of that subdivision.
So we kind of need to know...
We would need to know the sketch plan phase.
So we know the advertising thing, is this going to be a combination deal, or you're going to get to the Plan Commission then?
And in our notices, we could issue that, and the language would either say that it's a primary plot approval or primary and secondary plot approval. We could notify the sublet of that at that point. That's because of the sketch plan phase will allow us to at least get the information. In the sketch plan, the sketch plan is all done administratively. It's not before the board. So what ends up happening is when they come in with the Semil, here's my advertisement, I want to be on the next meeting, public meeting, well, Roger and I, we can pull that up and at least get a meeting, go through the schedule, make sure that what they're hoping to do is reasonable based on what the Plan Commission's doing. And some of you may have been aware, with the old ordinance, essentially, set everything in series, there was nothing parallel track. Everything from Plan Commission approvals to Board of Works approvals for subdivision. So one would approve the plan, it would go to the other group, and then they have so many days or an undefined amount of time to approve it. I ran the schedule one time to look at how long we could theoretically take to review and approve a subdivision, and it was as long as 13 months from the time the first application happened. That's far too long for subdivision. Honestly, with this schedule, we could meet within a week, they're really getting a notice as long as it can work within Roger and I's schedule with the developer. They could be on the next meeting agenda essentially once, I think it's 14 or 20 days to try to get the legal notice in and meet those requirements. They theoretically could combine the meetings, but honestly, one approval for one meeting, they could fall into the meeting on the next month, finish up their engineering and design, and be done in two meetings in two months from primary to secondary plan. And you'll see kind of how construction fits into this, when do they start construction between your secondary and primary plan. There's a little more detail in the primary plan, not significantly more, but at that point, we're going from the administrative approval to Plan Commission approval. So we're going from two parties to the whole group, and it's become really the project is published at that point. We do, I think we still have all the same angles and bearing distances, locations of all the lots, lot numbers, location of street lights, name of the proposed subdivision, location of front yard setbacks, so a number of new elements start to show off, the project's starting to take form as a subdivision. Name of the subdivider, certificate, and this would need to be stamped by every professional engineer, land surveyor. The sketch plan wouldn't need to be stamped at that point, this is the first essentially certified drawing. We did, we do include that they have preliminary cross-sections of the project, that gives us road cross-sections, gives us kind of a general feel for what their development and transportation from has. Primarily for subdivisions, we're looking at the public transit time, because the right of way is the most interest to the city, so that's why we start by looking at that. That would be usually a standard detail for most developers. Secondary plan, assuming the plan is then approved by the Plan Commission, the secondary plan would start, the parties involved in matter are the City Building Inspector, the Plan Commission, applicant, utilities. Here's where the Board of Works steps in. The City Board of Works would be involved, and also myself as City Engineer. Outcome at that point would be approval by the engineer regarding utilities, approval by the Plan Commission, Board of Works, and current mate, so both groups would get the plan at the same time, or before they would be kind of back-to-back or in series. And then the denial with explanations of reasons issued to applicant and the Board of Works or Plan Commission, depending on who was in the plan. The duration would be 10 working days for engineer review, plus 30 days for Board of Works and Plan Commission review. No action by other board within the timeframe equates to a denial of the plan. The primary plan approval, as you read the ordinance, actually, if they submit a primary plan to the Board of Plan Commission, and the Plan Commission can't make a decision, the developer is essentially assumed approval by the Plan Commission. The Plan Commission doesn't have to, if you, you have to deny it to kill a project, if you essentially table it at the table of approval and it moves on, they can move on with engineering a secondary plan design and submit their secondary plan after the 90 days. That's on their own, essentially. We definitely encourage any developer to do that, but that, that allows a developer to move forward with the plan, assuming that they can get approval at the secondary phase. I don't, we don't hold them off essentially. But they must have approval to move forward on the secondary plan. The structure is a little more complex, but once you kind of, once they go through this, it'll be making a little more sense. The application comes to the Building Inspector. The Building Inspector then submits the plan to the City Engineer, myself. I have 10 days to submit recommendations to both the City, I will end up doing review of the project on the utility side. I'm looking at water, they were in stormwater relief, so it's just the public works utilities. I will then draft a letter of recommendations for against and base and summarize my findings, and submit that to the City Board of Works, back to the Building Inspector, since he's the, he's the point of contact for the project, and to the Plan Commission. Roger then, as the Building Inspector, is also eligible to submit further recommendations of the secondary plan to both the Plan Commission and the City Board of Works. City Board of Works will get both the original Semil, my recommendations, and Roger's recommendations, if there are any, for both parties. They have then their 30-day review period, so the notice will go out, they're going to get tropical plans, and both parties essentially can approve the project at their next meeting following the review. 10 days gives me at least enough time to get that in and get my review done, and then submit that to the both groups. At the next meeting, either the City Board of Works can approve the plan or deny it, so if, say, for example, the Board of Works does not satisfy a specific aspect of the utilities being turned over to them, they can theoretically deny the plan. The notification of their denial then is issued back to the City Building Inspector and sent over to the Plan Commission. Even if the Plan Commission approves the plan, it doesn't fall through until both parties, the Board of Works and Plan Commission, approve it. They would deny based off of the utility issue. Plan Commission could approve the secondary plan, approve it, but the denial will then go back and reverse works. Does that make sense? Am I, can you see how the process kind of develops to allow both parties to move forward in the review? It wouldn't be a significantly different review process for either one, but it's kind of, this outline as far as the structure is something we kind of lacked in previous Secondary plan requirements, complete final grading plan of proportion of subdivision to be reported. The secondary plan is where you would see phases of a subdivision, say section one or section two. Your primary plan would have the overall. Secondary plan is where a developer would have the opportunity to say, I'm going to do section one of my subdivision or section two, they would continue on with their secondary plan requirements. Profiles on the scale, ground elevations for streets, highways, walkways, alleys, sanitary storm sewers, and drainageways, so swales and such would be detailed. Detailed plans and specifications for the street grading and construction of all pavement, curbs, gutters, and sidewalks are required. Plans and specifications for drainage structures and flood control provisions. Plans and specifications for sewer lines and water lines. Detailed plans and specifications for power systems, proving locations and easements to be used, that's essentially for your eking of the public utilities. Media, central link, where are their easements, what are they doing, are proposing to do. The final plan is essentially the post-construction step. We go back, with the secondary plan requirements of the subdivision, at that point, once they have approval, they can move forward on construction. Now, they haven't reported the plan, they're going to construct what we've approved, utility lines, we're going to pursue inspections and require some development. The secondary, the final plan is essentially saying, we built what we said we would build. At that point, then we would have the opportunity to record it. The parties involved in it to close out essentially the project is the Building Inspector, Plan Commission, the applicant, subdivider, Board of Works, and City Engineer. Essentially, the outcome at that point is acceptance of new utilities, what's been built by the, by myself, acceptance by the Building Inspector, approval by the Plan Commission... been built by myself, acceptance by the building inspector, approval by the plan commission and board of works currently, and sign and seal copy for recording. That's essentially where we would record the plot. They can start constructing the roads and streets, but if they don't do it in accordance with what's the approved plan, we don't allow them to record it. We don't essentially sign off, record it, and then start building it and then have to come back and modify the drawings, they have to come back and pull handsballs. The duration-
And we can do that by sections, if they do that by section, we can record that section.
We can record a section that's been built, that they've approved, and then they construct some lots. Essentially, we wouldn't record it prior to them actually constructing what's been done. Because the final plot probably should be a final plot. Many cities do it as a secondary plot because if they call it final and then they re-record it or make some modifications, it's not the final plot, the new one's the new final plot. You know, understand the language difference there. The duration varies depending on the construction, bonding and phases of the subdivision. Eighteen months from the last approval of secondary plot is kind of what we're looking at. Secondary plot, essentially, there's language in the ordinance that allows a primary plot approval to be extended, I don't get into that in this. But say the plan commission approved, we ran into this with Lake Shores. Well you approved my primary plot, it's all approved, right? Well, under the new ordinance, each primary plot approval had a duration. Your approval of a primary plot is good for twelve months. So if they don't move on, the secondary, essentially a section of the subdivision they're planning to construct, that approval essentially expires. Now, the ordinance does allow for a primary plot approval to be essentially continued. The recommendations, Roger and I, I think the board, is that at your business meeting, your first meeting of each year, any active primary plot that we have that we want to extend or that the developers ask to keep active, we essentially can review those and make that a matter of record that we're gonna continue that for another twelve months. So that allows the plan commission to say if there's been a significant change, if we want to deny, that that essentially let that expire, we can do that at that business meeting.
Just like the belt farm went out there now.
Correct.
This level would take him fifteen months or more to fill that first section up or better. You know, it might be a couple of years before you decide to open up another section.
So I think until he does section two, three, four, complete that subdivision, every year at our January first meeting, our first meeting in January, we'll ask in the plan commission agreement to continue the approval of the primary plot, which is the overall development plan. The secondary plot, or the secondary plot, the final plot for phase one, that's essentially the built and recorded, that's done. But it's the overall concept that we're approving, then he would just step in with, I wanna do secondary plot approval for phase two, and he'll submit ten or twenty lots for the next phase, we would jump immediately to the secondary plot review process. Because the primary plot is still available, but it's active. Does that make sense?
Yeah, let's go along and clarify that.
No, thank you Roger. With the final plot, you're gonna see essentially-
To ask where he is right now with this project. Now you're saying that you'll, in January, you'll check that to see where he is on this phase?
On-
And extend it if he hasn't-
Well, we extend the approval of phase, or the primary plot. So the overall content, design concept we approve. The secondary, the phase that he's built out there right now on Belt Farm, he's built everything, to my knowledge, built everything he took for the surface of the road.
He doesn't have the final surface yet.
So he's got a, and to do that and record it, there is language in there, I didn't want, that gets to be kind of a nuance. That becomes an issue that the board of works gets to approve upon. So for anything that have recorded, if you wanna record your plot and you haven't built the utility that you're obligated to do, the developer is, can do that, but then he has to request that permission. So then if the developer says, well I've done everything that I can do right now, can I just get this finalized, recorded, so I can sell my- He can't sell a lot in the subdivision until he finalizes this plot and gets it recorded.
Gets it recorded.
So he can't transfer, I'm trying to correct me, he can't transfer real estate until it's actually parcels and transferred. So he needs to record the plot, so he's gonna be pushing to shrink enough the size of the lots, or the size of the sections to the point where he can record these quickly and start selling parts off. He could probably take a deposit, but that's his own, that's their own issue. For us, we don't really want to record these until we've got everything the abs built. That's been the issue for us in the past, is getting abs built of what's been actually put in the ground. We get a secondary plot, this is what I intended to do, and then they don't do it, well then we don't know it until well after it's been done, and lots, homeowners are coming to complain. Well, here, there's no home, they can't sell a lot to anybody until we've reviewed these plans. So that interrupts that stuff.
Nate, for the other business, but we've got a deal, I would ask you to start summarizing.
Okay, I'll pick this up. Recording of the final plot, covenants, the plan commission will get a copy of the secondary plot, developer would have covenants for review. This could be at a regularly scheduled meeting. I think we'd like it kind of somewhat open as far as recording the plan. If Roger and I and the utilities or agreements that they've done with on the plan, essentially the president, vice president of the plan commission could essentially sign and seal the plans, the abs bills, and then we could record the plot. So at that point, I don't know if we would need to have a plan commission meeting to review or approve the plans at that point. It's kind of left open for the officers of the plan commission to just essentially sign those plans and then they can move on to recording them. We did modify the fee structure, if you're curious about that, there's been fees overall that's been modification, those increased across the board, some more than others. Withdrawal of approval, the plan commission may withdraw any recommendation or approval by plan commission of a plan or plot if and when it determines if the information or specifications are in error, false, or by your required decisions and terminate. So you can revoke approval of a plan up to the point of final plot approval. So if there's information that we give you that says it's non-conformant, you may be able to take the action and vote for approval and fire it. Expiration of approval, that's where we were sort of talking about that as far as the year from the action, depending on the building inspector recommendations, so it'll be a business meeting approval. Approved the location permit, that's what, still what we saw here with Gilton, where they were looking for this approval of a modification. Site plan approval after development of any lot or parcel inside the city limits. It's not a subdivision, it's an improvement on a plan. You could do anything from fence, lights, parking lot, to a building, before everything all fell under a plan commission approval. Now, we've separated based on zoning designations. R1, R2, RH, and C1 and C2 now can be done as an administrative approval within ten working days. So that could now require a plan commission meeting. Plan commission meetings are essentially restricted to C3, I1, and I2 zones, or a non-conforming use in these lesser zones. So if it complies with the ordinance, Roger and I can approve it. If there's some special use that needs to be done, then we would defer it back, because Roger and I don't wanna be responsible for approving something that's non-conformant to the ordinance. These are the development items that would need to be included, we can, Sharon's got a checklist for you to use in the future, I think we've created those, so I won't belabor the point. It's far more detailed than what we had in the past, but it's nothing that most engineers don't already create for plans, so. Procedure, compliant plan use, no variance, things that I mentioned earlier, it goes through the review process, compliance act, and then occupancy permits, you'll see in highlights on the bottom. Occupancy permits shall be issued by the building inspector. No occupancy permits without compliance with the approved plan and receipt of any required and expected drawings. It holds Roger from, no occupancy permits can be allowed, so you're not moving any building until we have the drawn, other developments. Multi-family projects, no C3, I1, that would go through what we have as a typical plan commission meeting process. So anything that's specially used or your high intensity commercial developments will come back before the plan commission. There's a ten working day review for the utilities for that, so, and then we would follow the same process, you've seen the patch, it'll be routed, constantly be submitted to plan commission, plan commission would then have an opportunity to review it. Similar plan submittal items, there's nothing distinct between one or the other, it's just a submittal process and review of the ordinance. Additional approval to plan commission, the city building inspector shall present information to the officers of the commission, they shall sign the crib drawings along with all required conditions. Complete those site plan will be beholden to the officer of the city building inspector for future reference. House of record drawings to be kept by Roger for reference. Again, no occupancy permits shall be issued by the city building inspector without compliance with the receipt of the asset drawings. At this point, I think what we can do is in the future, they will discuss some topics for modification. Gilton needed to come to us, or come to plan commission because of what, because of his own designation, not because it was, I don't understand what he ordered. So it was something that was, could we fast-track his project, similar to what we've talked about, can make the process more streamlined? We really didn't want to do that for those type of zones because of the potential for nuisance or projects. Usually industrials, so open-ended, we, Roger and I didn't feel it was something that we should do on an administrative level, it's really something that should come before the plan commission. So we just decided based on zoning, that was the determining factor. The ordinance does not address industrial change of use problems we've talked about. An industrial property was approved under certain use and changes something else, other ways that we could change that, I itemized a couple of different options that we may wanna discuss in the future data. At that point, that's a quick review of some of the ordinance changes. If you have questions, let me know, I'll be happy to meet with you in the next step of the later date.
Still, the biggest thing is the timeframe of everything, you know. We ran into it again today and yesterday a little bit, we've been talking with the main street thing about these apartments and stuff, about buildings or townhouses, whatever they, you know. Well, they hit us up today about, well, what's it got to go in front of the board, or, you know, well yeah, it's a residential development plan basically, so it has to come in front of the board. It's gotta be approved by special exception and a-
Business, of course, whole district here down the street.
Well, now all of a sudden they're under the gun because they gotta have this in timeframe, the application's gotta be done by the first of November, and the approval has to be part of that application. Well, so they put us under the gun right away. You know, it's, well hey, you've been talking about this for three months, where were you? You know, why didn't you come and get the approval, you know, they're always putting us in the board under the gun for this type of thing, and it's-
What we've done with this is we essentially just cemented certain dates. I mean, there's thirty days, ninety days, or ten days, essentially is what we're looking at depending on whose review. I've given myself ten days, so I'm being pretty critical on what timeframe I've got to review the project. We're working with plan commission, like thirty, ninety days for first initial action on a project. And that's something that we need to get out to those people wanting to do developments as far as what our content is. We can try to fast-track it when there's-
But we wanna try to stand firm on our end of it, no, we're not advertising till we have the proper paperwork. You're not gonna bring it in a day before the meeting and expect us to get you guys the information. No, that's not gonna work, so we're standing kind of firm, when you submit all the proper paperwork, then we'll process it and start getting illegally advertisements set to date for the meeting. It don't seem to sink in to anybody, and then, well-
The use of the checklist for minimum elements in the drawings are something that everyone will have, so if you as a plan commission member, I'm just a member on the plan commission that comes to the voting days, if you see something that's missing, bring it up, ask the question, that's what it's here for, but it's for, it's essentially, it's a plan commission, you're the group of their peers, you're representative of the public in the interest of the project. So it's beneficial to get familiar with the project, what we're looking for, what you've seen in past projects, and we can move forward on that, so.
Well, and to address Roger's timeframe issue, Melissa Norby, the community coordinator working through the mayor's office, is getting ready to start a column or an FYI piece that will be in The Democrat every week. In addition to that, it will be followed up on social media with Facebook and those types of things. So she will be looking for valuable information to put in there to educate the members of our community, so stuff like that-
Needs to be, yeah.
Needs to be in there. Do you wanna do a building? Do you wanna do a project? Do you wanna do something like this? This is what's involved and this is who you need to talk to. So her office is going to start communicating more through those media very shortly. So if you think of, good FYI projects, pass it on to her, please.
Do we have to do anything with this, Tim?
No, I think, this was just informational from Nate to explain what the procedure is going to be in the future. I think it's pretty well thought out, and it will provide in the future some consistency so that people that are trying to submit plans for developments understand the process. We can say, look, this is how it's gonna be handled. It's designed to give us the oversight that we need to have, but it also is designed to streamline the process so it doesn't unduly delay development.
Small modifications are very quick, it's a fairly low ILP for permits, that's what is doing coming, we can review very quickly, and we could approve a redevelopment, reuse of the old Staples facility in ten days essentially, have somebody in and then it's not a long process. That sort of development is not encouraged in this specific case, so.
Any other questions or comments from commission members? We're hearing none, we're ready to go on to the third item. Ready to move on then to the third item on our agenda, petition for plan commission to make recommendation to consider amending the city zoning map to reflect changes from B business classification to C commercial classification under the recodified city code of 2015.
Okay, first of all, I'd ask that the petition to amend the zoning map be made a matter of record. Is there a docket for this, Roger? Like on a zoning, or petition to rezone, do you have a docket number or not? Okay, all right, so I'd make a matter, ask that that be made a matter of record, and I'll explain what's going on.
Okay, so I hear a motion to make a matter of record, petition to amend the Decatur, Indiana zoning map to be consistent with the text of the Decatur city code of ordinance of 2015.
No move.
Motion's been made, second. Motion's been made, second. Any questions? All in favor, signify with saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign.
Okay, if you look at our new code, well, that was adopted in July of 2015, one of the changes that was made is that the previous zoning classifications of B1, B2, and B3 were changed to C1, C2, C3. The permitted uses, the contingent uses, special use exceptions allowed under those zoning classifications are identical, there's nothing changed there. But, when the code was codified, it amended the text of the zoning code, the chapter in the code, but it did not amend the map. Well, our map still shows B1, B2, B3 zoning classifications and doesn't reference C1, C2, or C3 zoning classifications at all. So we need to, is kind of a technical correction that we're doing, but we need to make a recommendation to common council to amend the zoning map to reflect that previously B1, B2, B3 zoning classifications are now classified as C1, C2, and C3, okay? To make it consistent with the amendment that occurred in the text of the zoning ordinance itself. So that's the purpose of this petition, you know, you're, the, we, you know, had we, and this is my fault, I should've caught this and I didn't, but if we, if we had, we could have corrected that in the body of the ordinance when we were reviewing it, I just didn't catch up. So, but this is something that needs to be done so that in the future, we don't have a problem where somebody comes in and they're challenging something and then all of a sudden we got an issue of our code text and our map are inconsistent, okay? So the process of making an amendment is that the plan commission has to basically make a recommendation, you are advisory committee, you don't make the final decision, but make a recommendation to common council, and then common council has to adopt an ordinance that amends the map to be consistent with the changes in the text of the code.
So we need a motion to make a recommendation to the- So we need a motion to make a recommendation to the common council to accept the petition.
To recommend.
Mention them.
And this is something you authorized Barb to sign as chairperson, but this is a hearing on that, and then at that point, you take a vote, and the vote is you either recommend that the petition be approved, you recommend that the petition be rejected, or you make no recommendation whatsoever. You have three choices.
Okay. Any questions at this point? And we'll ask for a motion to recommend. Make a motion to recommend to the city council, the common council.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Who made that?
I recommend approval.
Second?
Second.
Second? Okay, by Bill. Any discussion?
Just a quick note of discussion. One of the primary reasons we're doing this is so the developers who are working in other communities across Northeastern Indiana are up against the same terminology and they don't have to learn new language when they want to speak Decatur.
Yeah, I mean, it's just...
As simple and straightforward as possible for them. Or in the case that their attorneys or engineering staff has prepared documentation that makes reference to C and we were still B, this just made life easier.
Right, because your assessment cards are cordoned, it's all categorized as commercials, C, you know, C property. You see auctions or real estate people, they have this property selling as a commercial property. They don't address business. And it's pretty well C zoning, you know, like Greg said, in the rest of North...
That's the reason the change was made.
That's the reason the change was made, Bill.
Even, any other questions, comment? All in favor of making the recommendation, signify with saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Okay, then the next item is old business or discussion? Roger, you?
I don't really have much for old business, new business, but we're expecting an application from Mark and Earl Gamble to come up for a use. They originally was wanting to apply for a use, but if he got far there to submitting, he was going to go for a zoning change. So that's going to come up in discussion in the near future, wherever he gets his paperwork in line.
And that's what, and that's why we asked the BZA to stick around if they could, the other BZA members that aren't members of the Plan Commission. If you look at the, the situation is this, there's a neighbor that's apparently complained several times with regard to a current use that exists. The use doesn't comply with current zoning, the use was never permitted, and over the years, as I understand, the use has expanded to the point where this individual is complaining and asking that the city take some type of action. This came to the Board of Works and the mayor and the Board of Works directed me to send a letter out to the individuals indicating that they were not in compliance with the zoning code and that they needed to apply for permits, necessary permits to operate. And the initial reaction, I was thinking, was if they would apply for a special use exception.
Yeah.
But it doesn't fit real well in the home occupation definition. The problem is that if you don't rely upon that, then what's going to happen is you're going to have, you're going to be faced with the possibility of rezoning the property, and then you would probably even then have to grant a special use exception. Because if you look at the nature of the business, as I understand, is some type of body shop auto repair business, and it's being done out of a big garage on site. And so if you, if you look at the zoning code, there's just no easy fit. Either you treat it as a home occupation, grant it as a special use exception, and then you'd have to limit, you could potentially limit, put conditions on that use if you felt that was appropriate. Otherwise, the individual can seek a rezoning request, but then that opens it up to other types of uses, and it potentially could become an issue with regard to spot zoning. Okay, so we kind of, it's, nothing's before you, so we're not talking about any specifics, but the issue is, you know, administratively, what is the appropriate procedure to follow? Is it something that goes before the BZA or is it something that goes before the Plan Commission and possibly BZA? And, you know, I think that if you look at the definition of home occupation, it doesn't really fit well within that. In essence, that's what it is. But generally, home occupations are more where you're thinking along the lines of, it can be used in accessory buildings, so it's not limited to a residence. But there are limitations on square footage, which probably would restrict the ability of this individual to use it for this purpose. So, you know, I guess looking at it before Roger accepts a petition or, you know, do you, do you have any, do you have a preference on how this is going to be handled? Do you want it to be brought before the Plan Commission's rezoning request? And I guess we were looking for some direction from you.
Real quickly, can you go through the procedure that would be involved in a request for rezoning?
What you would do is the petition for rezoning would be filed by the applicant. They request a particular zoning classification, most likely to allow this to either be a permitted use or possibly a use that would be permitted by special exception. So if you look at the zoning classifications, you're probably looking at some type of C2 or C3 zoning classification, if not industrial. Those are probably the three zoning classifications where this type of use would be permitted or could be allowed by special use exception. You know, the issue here is trying to find a balance to be joining neighbors who probably have a very legitimate reason to be complaining, but it's also a business that's been there for a number of years. And so is there a balance that can be found that can not restrict the business to the point of eliminating it, but at the same time, addressing the concerns that are being raised by some of the neighbors?
Did it start as a hobby and then turned into a business?
I guess. I'm not real familiar with that.
Years ago, I think that's the way he approached it, when he, I just want to, you know, he was 20 years younger at the time, and hey, I just want to use it as a tinker shop. He was one that was, you know, well, he'd go over and sometimes pick it over, and it's a little bit more than a tinker shop now, but it is his livelihood.
Can I add a comment back there?
Actually, I don't have a comment. I want to introduce Leah Thomas, who's the next order for...
Okay.
She can fill you in on a lot more.
Well, we can discuss that.
We don't have an application for this.
Yeah, so it...
Correct. You do have a letter that you sent to him for an application.
Yeah. We haven't gotten it, yeah, it hasn't been...
He did not respond in the timely fashion.
He's responded, but it just hasn't been fully completed.
Okay, it also says that until September the 3rd, you would be removing things on the property if you didn't do it yourself. None of that has been done. I see no change. He parks at least 10 cars in this lot, which is not a big enough lot for 10 cars, and he parks on the street. So he will have maybe 15 cars on the street at all times. Some of them are real junkers, some of them don't have light vehicles, and he doesn't know when they're able to move.
I would encourage all of you to drive past this place on your way home to the street. Seriously, it's a nice location.
The, if there are inoperable vehicles, then those can be towed, they can be taken towed. So I don't know what...
If they're on the street.
Yeah.
There's one on the street right there, last night.
In there every week. And they'll say, well, why didn't you call it in? And I'll say, because I thought the letter was going to impress you.
I think what the board needs to know is that we do have some spot businesses in that area that are zoned properly. For example, the wrecker company over on 12th Street or 11th Street, that property is zoned for that purpose. The Quonset...
That was, those were...
I just, I guess I just want to point out that there's businesses in that area that are that way, that are zoned that way. The Quonset hat down at the corner of Dayton and 11th Street, the old Schaefer Building is zoned that way. So if we're looking at spot zoning, that can be done, but I'd like to, I don't know if we can do it. The attorney, our attorney could let us know, but is this something that we could discuss how we want to zone this business and then give him a yearly permit?
Well, you can put conditions upon a special use exception, and that could limit the time of operation, the type of storage, exterior storage. It could limit, it could be something that would be reviewed at the end of a period of time.
I think I'd like to...
So there are different types of conditions that you could impose on that type of thing. I guess what I'm saying is, in order to do that, then you're looking at a special use exception, and whether you try to do it through the home occupation use or whether you do it by rezoning it that requires a special use exception, that's really what we need to kind of sort out.
Right. I think that's what we do.
We have to give this person some direction on what to file. And they came in initially, and then we said, wait a minute, because we're not sure this fits.
We have several new members sitting on the Plan Commission. Can you just talk a moment about the spot zoning and what the history has been and what the city's opinion is on spot zoning?
Yeah, the spot zoning is discouraged because what you don't want is individual property zoned for a particular use, and then that use is incompatible with surrounding uses. So you generally try to allow for compatible uses to be near one another. I think what you're suggesting, Bill, is that there are other businesses in the area, so, you know, this wouldn't necessarily be totally out of line, but...
Those were businesses before our ordinance actually took effect. And it's what that opens up is, hey, those people aren't business forever, and somebody else you buy it, now it can become a new business of some other nature that, you know, that you have no control.
The risk that you have of rezoning it is that if it's rezoned to a higher classification, now you've opened up all kinds of uses. So typically, from the perspective of trying to protect surrounding property owners, you're almost better off treating it as potential approval as a special use exception, where you can rein it in and put conditions on it.
That's what we need to do.
It may affect valuation as well of the properties.
Oh, certainly.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and, you know, I've driven by the place, I understand what Mrs. Thompson's...
It becomes an enforcement issue.
I have a comment on the neighborhood. I'm right across the street from Hoosier Avenue, which runs an impeccable business. They are parked every day in Mark's spaces. They aren't, they never zoom out of there when they're out of work. He just painted and kept that building up. It's really a wonderful business. There is no problem looking next door to Hoosier Avenue. The trouble with Mark, Mark, I've had a previous mayor comment that he is a hillbilly, a good old hillbilly, and he had a hill in Kentucky. Those cars would be all down that, you see yourself when you're driving through. On my street, he tried to park 10 cars into a driveway that maybe would be for two or three. And if he could get that in his mind, that he runs a business, make appointments, have your cars come in, fix them, let them on, have the other cars come in, that would be fine. And if he didn't park on both sides of the street, and his father didn't his lot down the street, he'd have the same thing going on then, you know, it's like they're taking over.
I've commented numerous times, he's his own worst enemy.
And that's true.
So the home-based business designation, something worth pursuing, but we've already determined that we haven't categorized physical limitations on a home-based business?
Well, and I, here's the other thing, and it comes up in the context of what Nate was discussing previously, where he ended with kind of some discussion questions. To me, one of the things that we ought to be looking at as well is the various uses, they're either allowed as permitted uses or contingent uses or special uses. Because honestly, I went through the code this afternoon, and I was looking at that, and many of the uses I know have been there that way for a long time, but I'm not quite sure why. Some uses don't make a lot of sense. So that may be something else that we take a look at, perhaps even look at some other zoning codes to see how they word it. The other thing that you don't have is, you don't have a lot of flexibility in some of the definitions, and that may need to be addressed as well. So that, you know, it gives you the latitude to try to address an issue that comes up in this nature without opening up a Pandora's Box by rezoning and then creating potentially a bigger issue down the road.
It appears, according to what they were looking at, that there's many buildings on this, his property?
There's just a very large pole barn, large building on our street. And then there's this house, which is a two-story family house, which these are all little cottage houses. And I'll tell you, most of them are either rented by his father, the owner, or by Joe Garcia, who has passed away. And Joe's wife just put up, I think, four or five properties for sale that belong to her right on that little street. She will not sell, for example. Gamble wants to buy those, and should he buy them and you make an exception, we may be living in a business zone. So it's a lot...
So his houses, the one with the red roof on them?
I feel badly for his, for, he is a family man, he's trying to raise a family, it's his job. Should he be able to work within the limits that he was put on, that would be wrong. You know, if he cleaned it up, get the trash out, get the rugs and all the things out. His backyard is bad, it's his front yard.
We've yet to give Roger guidance.
Yes.
And Roger touched on the other thing that is, needs addressed, is enforcement. We don't have aggressive enforcement.
You know, the...
Get down and write him a ticket and send him to court.
The option that you have is to file a lawsuit, and it's going to take time and it's going to take money. So, you know, if that's the direction of the city, then I'll certainly do it.
Any input for Roger?
That's why I always question the board when you make a decision, don't put too many restrictions on because it becomes an enforcement issue, somebody's got to look after for years and years and years. Yes or no answer is not a bad answer sometimes.
Because planning's been aware of this, everything's been fixed. And I can remember all the calling and saying that they couldn't take my word for it, that it was a list. And I said, well, I can come down and look at it, and they said they wouldn't, they did that to everybody, you tell me when that's done. So it's been going on for a long time. And everybody, every time I've approached the mayor, it's not specifically the mayor, but the mayor before, he would tell me, call Roger, Roger told me to call the mayor. Roger once told me to call the sheriff office, the police station. I called there and they laughed. So I just have a little bit of a neighbor to go on, but it has gotten worse than last year.
Jack, did you have a comment?
Well, I'm just trying to comprehend, you keep referring to the home-based business in a residential district. But to me, a home-based business would be like a Mary Kay dealership or something where the people go in the home and, or she's a seamstress or something like that, not a full-blown body shop with a lot of vehicles.
I'm not saying that it necessarily is a good fit, but that's probably the only exception that you can rely... exception that you can rely upon under our current zoning code that would give you the ability to potentially approve that it's a special exception. Right. So, you know, before we tell him one way or the other, I wanted to bring it to your attention that the alternative is for him to request rezoning and then possibly either zone it at such a high level that it would be a permitted use or would have to be approved as a special exception, which most likely is a C3 or an industrial zoned area.
Or it could be denied.
It could be denied, but you're probably looking at a lawsuit then.
Well...
Because of the interference with the business operation.
And it's already been zoned for business?
No.
He just started doing it in his house.
No, but it's been there for, I don't know how long.
Started out with a hobby with his dad supposedly, and then as the boy got older, he created the business and then he got hooked up with another dealer in town that's supplying him...
Work.
Work. So now it's become a business. Yeah, I, my only comment was, whatever type or however we can zone it to keep him in business, I think we need restrictions. I think we need to tell him as a city how many vehicles he can have on his property, how many hours he can work. Just make it so that he has to answer to something and somebody. That's my feelings. And if he doesn't, then, yeah, we get an attorney involved. I mean, this started out that he was to come up and apply for, on the Board of Works, and apply for a business permit, but he never did. So that's how Tim got involved and the Board of Works got involved and forced him to come up. Now, I think the guy has to be forced to do things properly. He just, if you don't put any force on him, he'll just do what he wants to.
When the pole building was built, I'm assuming that came in and was approved by somebody?
How long has that been there?
Yeah. That was even by a different individual, right?
No, he did it, but Fred, the mayor then.
Fred Hirsch was?
When he did the pole building?
You went through all of his daddy's Michaela's stuff, and it's not like any new quarter university. Well, Roger was the one, you were the one that was there looking over and looking.
Yeah, seems like it was way back and, I don't know, but he...
You were the head of the... You were head of the zoning.
There's a lot of supposition going on at this point.
Yeah, okay. I guess, you know, you have a choice. So you can either tell Roger that, have the individual apply for rezoning and then if it's a permitted use...
Here's a concern I have with the rezoning. The rezoning allows it as permitted use, but he wouldn't be in conformance with that development as a standard. He doesn't have the site needs, the separation and the rest. He wouldn't be able to make any conformance. He would have to have exceptions to allow it as it is, even immediately upon the rezoning request.
That's what I'm saying. If he rezones, he's going to have to come before both bodies. He's going to have to rezone before the plan commission.
But it's no one cure, he's going to have...
So if he's going to end up before the BZA, you know, is it better to have him apply for a special use exception? I mean, if he chooses to rezone or petition to rezone, that's up to him and then it's up to you to decide whether you approve it or not. And it's a recommendation that you make to the common council and common council then takes action either to uphold your recommendation or override it.
All right. Well, there's nothing that we can do at this meeting, so...
Well, there is to make a recommendation to Roger of what they want to do. Would you prefer the zoning or the special use exception? The rezoning or special use exception? Don't hear any... If we get the special use exception, we could do what Bill was suggesting.
If it's a special use exception, it doesn't come before the plan commission at all. It goes directly to the BZA.
It would stay residential as well.
And then the BZA would be the one that could impose conditions.
And special use exemptions are not transferable to, you can't sell a property with a special use exemption, or you can't?
No.
No.
You can't buy that property.
Okay. Specifically, it's one of the done, they go back to residence after he's done with the business.
Plus, like I said, I would go with a timeframe. I would give him a six months, a year, whatever the Board of Zoning Appeals would want to do and then have him come up and renew and then that way the neighborhood will know how he's doing, what he's doing, and they have, at that point, could have input.
Why don't you rezone the whole thing for business and have the economic development? People will all be in something they're ready for. I mean, it is that type of neighborhood. I would rather see you rezone for business.
I think you have to take it a step at a time.
Yeah, you're right.
And it's only, you know, this half a block away from the testing site, which is only a block.
Right, I understand. And in the future, that may be a possibility. Right. So, you know, if, it's entirely up to the applicant which way he chooses to go. I mean, we can't force him to not file a petition to rezone, but we can certainly make him aware that, you know, that may be an uphill fight.
I'm just saying, going through the government and following the order that's booked, those things become difficult to enforce.
But I think if, well, what I would suggest, that he be encouraged if the BZA members and plan commission, you know, I can't even ask you for a vote on this because there's nothing before you, but I would recommend that we try to do it through granting a special use exception and make a, you know, a square peg fitting around the hole.
But did he reach him up on the third or before to try to get this application? But I think there's some challenges there between the applicant or whether they can get it completed.
But what about cleaning up the property that he was supposed to have? Now, how many more letters can we keep sending?
That's a common council issue. If that's the way the plan commission would take any actions on...
It's code enforcement.
Yeah, it really looks like nobody's paying attention to it. I mean, it's not being enforced. You're not going to carry anywhere, giving and threats.
Well, if there's properties or inoperable vehicles on the street, those can be tagged and removed.
I'll be glad to have a meeting with the board on the table.
Can we take it by consensus then to recommend that they try to use the special use exception?
Yeah, because they can tag it also. In fact, they have the authority to tow and I don't, so...
All right. We'll make that recommendation. We're going to recommend that they go ahead and apply for a special use exception in a residential for, under home exception or home occupation. And if he chooses to file a petition to rezone, then it comes before the plan commission. So we just wanted to give you heads up that there may be something coming your way, we don't know yet.
And those are the conditions that you want to get him as far as Bill said, that he would every six months after renew it or every year after renew it?
That's one of the conditions that can be made.
Yeah.
Be determined later.
Yes, that would be done in the context of the hearing on whether to grant the special use.
Right, and that could, we really shouldn't even discuss that without knowing the merits of the ethical application.
Right.
Because we're guessing and we have no business doing that.
Especially, I don't know about now, but drive by at 3:00 in the afternoon.
Okay, do I, anyone else have anything else to be... I hear a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you. I want this one.